The public session of the Winchester Select Board for Wednesday, May 19th. I'm Susan Verdicchio. I serve as Chair. With me tonight are Mike Betancourt, Amy Shapiro, Richard Mucci, and Mariano Golubov, who serves as Vice Chair. There was a motion that Mr. Mucci asked to make at the outset of our session. And this was a previous meeting, and it wasn't in order. And so I agreed to make it be the first item on the agenda. But before I do that, this is a public meeting. And because of the intense public interest in this, I really feel it's important to allow some public comment first. Ask people to keep their comments as brief as possible, or if they speak for a group, you know, to be the spokesperson. I would like to limit it to, you know, 20 minutes at the most. And so I'll ask Patty to call on the people who have their hands raised, sort of in the order that they have them raised. And also remind everyone that the public comment is an opportunity to speak on an issue for the board or an issue before the board. But it's not a dialogue, so it will not be a conversation. So with that, I would like to open public comment.
Okay, the first person is Rainey.
Rainey, you may speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Rainey Busold. I live on Washington Street, right by the Morocco School. Approximately two years ago, my daughter was grazed by a car. And the person, one of the first people to reach out to me was Susan, who said, "This is a dangerous situation. Let's work to fix it." I was very happy to have help, especially navigating sort of town politics and who to speak to and when to speak and how to get the attention of the Select Board to make sure that we create a safer environment for all of our children. There was a missing school guard in front of the school. The post was unfilled. And we were able to get a position by the town approved for an experienced crossing guard. And now that intersection is much safer. I have a lot of respect for Susan and what she's done for our community. And I believe that there isn't enough information anyways from the video that I had watched on Monday regarding the reasons for why Mr. Mucci is asking for a reorganization of the Select Board. It would be interesting to hear and understand those as well. But she has my full respect, is knowledgeable about how to get things done in the town, and has been a very, very caring member of our community.
Thank you, Rainey. I see Anthea Brady.
Hi, can you hear me? This is actually Seamus. We jump back and forth on computers. And sometimes Calder's name appears too. He's probably here in the background. Hopefully, he won't tell a joke. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. I just wanted to say, you know, as a citizen of town, and I'm sorry, I live on Clemente Street. It's definitely concerning to me just seeing what's happening here. You know, I have full faith in all members of our Select Board. And you all made a decision six weeks ago. And I'm just confused as to the sudden change in that decision. I don't think it reflects well on the town. And I always come back to myself as an educator. I don't think it teaches a great lesson to students and children. I think, you know, as someone who's hired a lot of people, I don't know how many each of you has hired in your careers, but I've hired hundreds of people. And I take a lot of ownership in who I hire. And their success is a reflection on me. So if you all voted for Susan to be Chair, which you did, her success is a reflection on you. So that would just be my thought there. So thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Seamus. Next, I see Heidi Rutzstein Delio. Heidi.
Hi, thank you. And Heidi Rutzstein Delio, I live on Lock Street, precinct five. And I'm a town meeting member. Honestly, before this election, I saw a very big disconnect happening on the Select Board. I don't think this is a new problem. And I frankly think that you all need some type of mediator to come in and help you work through the issues. Because there is no transparency with some things. And then some things, there's too much information shared. And I think you all have really great personality traits that you should be able to work together. But you also have some very strong differences. And I think that you're not using those to your advantage. I think what you need to do is come up with a game plan, have somebody help mediate. And the first step should not be to oust someone. The first step should be to help that person succeed. So you need to come up with a plan and say, "This is what we expected. This is what happened that we didn't feel went correct. And this is how we're going to fix it. This is the person who's going to carry that out. And this date is when we're going to come back in public and hold you accountable." I think you're all responsible for this. I think all of you, I mean, if you say you feel like you've been in the dark, well, why haven't you been speaking up in public all of a sudden? We don't know this. So I think that you need to take a step back. And reorganization has no place in taking part right now. It's too early, and you have some work to do as a team. I feel like I'm managing a staff again. But I don't know what's with all of you. You're not working to help each other. You're working against each other. It needs to stop. We haven't had a strong Select Board, I feel like, in a number of years. And it's very disappointing. And I love all of you. I know all of you. And I know that you're capable of doing this work. But I think you need help, and you need a mediator. I don't think reorganization and ousting somebody is the good first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Next, I see Timothy Matthews.
Hi, yeah, Tim, it's Tim Matthews. Yeah, no, Timothy's fine. I'm here with my husband Greg as well. Thank you, Susan. I just want to echo the comments that Heidi made as well. I was embarrassed to watch the video that I saw online today. I think in particular, I wanted to highlight what I think, you know, I've met and spoken to various members of the board in person. I live on Kenwin Road, diagonally across the street from Chair Verdicchio, and have dealt with you on some issues as well and have the utmost respect for the members of the board that I do have personal acquaintance with. But what I witnessed on video was embarrassing. In particular, the behavior I saw from Mr. Mucci, as well as Mr. Betancourt and Ms. Shapiro, was not professional and reflective of the values of our town, I think. And I really hope that in reflecting upon that and what I hope you've now seen to be the substantial pushback that those of us in our town have, you know, voiced in various forums over the past couple of days. I only just became aware of it today. You've seen that, you know, it's our hope that you can all find a way to work together in a much more collegial and collaborative way and understand really that the way to deal with disagreements professionally is not by leveling accusations in an unspecified way, by, you know, blindsiding colleagues in a public forum in a rushed way right before a much larger meeting, but rather trying to work collaboratively together, which is what we voters elect you to do. And especially when you're new to a job. I've been new to a lot of jobs over the course of my now almost 20-year career. And one of the things I've learned is that the best way to approach a new job is to be humble and try to learn from those who've been doing the job before you for quite a long time and not come in and assume that you deserve to be elected President, CEO, or Chair right away. And that, you know, the best way to go in is to learn from those other people, their experience, and to figure out a way that you might be able to find a way to all move forward together and find conciliation and collaboration as the best path first before adopting, you know, a lot of combative tone. And so I'm really hoping that you can all five find a good way to move forward together in the best interests of our town. Because I think that's really what's called for in this situation. Thanks so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Tim. I now see Rebecca.
Yes, this is Rebecca Sliz at Two Watson Place. I see by your nod that you can hear me. Yes, yes. So like Tim or Timothy, who just spoke, when I learned of this motion and watched the video, I was deeply, deeply disappointed, embarrassed, I think, was his word. And I would share that word. Not only because it involves removing Susan Verdicchio as Chair of this Board after only six weeks in the role, but also because the motion was made with little regard for proper protocol and with vague claims, but no specific evidence to back it up, which was pointed out very eloquently by Mr. Golubov in the meeting. Regarding protocol, it was disturbing to hear a new member of the Select Board essentially dismiss the Town Council's observation that the motion was not on the meeting agenda and therefore should not be discussed and that the manner in which the discussion was proceeding could violate open meeting law. It was even more disheartening to hear the same member suggest that a reorganization of the Select Board leadership would not be of interest to the public. I think the fact that there are over 200 people who joined this meeting tonight shows that there is absolutely public interest in this issue. And continuing briefly, many people in town are aware of Susan's extensive leadership experience and her history of making decisions that strengthen our town. She served six years on the school committee. And as its Chair, has earned respect and admiration for her ability to collaborate, her humility, her attention to detail, her quiet manner. But when she speaks, it is incredibly meaningful and relevant. So it is distressing to think that her leadership would be challenged after a mere 42 days and that the Select Board would seemingly attribute the issues leading to this motion to reorganize to her lack of leadership, rather than allow for the possibility that she was inheriting a problematic organizational culture from the previous Chair. So I would respectfully request that the Select Board member withdraw the motion to remove Susan Verdicchio from her role as Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'm going to have to cut this off soon. I'll allow one more person. I think I see Pamela Court.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I want to echo what people said about that last meeting being embarrassing. To say that you don't know what's going on for two years and to wonder who's responsible, I would say, look in the mirror. And to think that you came to come in as a new person and want to take over a role when you haven't served in a governmental position before and are pointing a finger at somebody who's got years of experience with governmental leadership, I think is arrogant and inappropriate. If there were issues, I think everybody has to look in the mirror. It's a team. It's a five-person team of very capable people who need to take ownership over how the Board runs. It's not just one person. And there are certainly other ways that this could have been addressed besides what happened at that last meeting. In terms of whether or not the Board has a right to reorganize itself, it certainly does. But it does so at the expense of public trust and public confidence. And I would hope that the Board takes that trust and confidence seriously because it didn't feel like you did at that last meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. And I will close public comment. I would like to say that I've been in this Chair position for six weeks. But I was on the school committee for six years, the final one as Chair. One of the things that was very clear from the town meeting is that many people in town are concerned about the town's financial position. And I am too. In the background are concerns about collective bargaining agreements that are for town staff that are coming up for renegotiation. I have experience from the school committee with labor negotiations. And we'll follow the policy that the Board adapted last summer. The Board will meet with the town manager to discuss strategy and the financial goals of the negotiation before negotiations start. And we can have a member sitting in on negotiation sessions and then reporting back to the Board so we can monitor and understand what the issues are and what the developments are in the impact of the raises. Second, no one member of the Board, particularly the Chair, even with very good intentions, should insert themselves as a regular participant in any other committees or boards or pursue any new initiative as if the Board has already authorized it or to contact town staff. We have very smart, experienced, dedicated, a very smart, dedicated team of town staff whose time and whose views we should respect. I know some of what happened, it shouldn't have happened. And together, we need to fix that. And we need to get back into an in-person setting as quickly as we possibly can. The Board should have the discipline to do an annual evaluation of the Town Controller and the Town Manager and of itself. Immediately, the Board needs to set some goals and then allocate roles and tasks among members fairly. The Chair and Vice Chair positions should just rotate maybe more frequently than every 12 months. We can change that. We can work on that. By rights, it should be Ms. Shapiro's turn to be Vice Chair. And her skills in organization management would be particularly valuable. And I'd welcome her in that role. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I have a comment and also an amendment to the motion. So first, I want to thank the hundreds of Winchester residents who have reached out to me over the last couple of days over this topic. Many of them referred to what happened on Monday night as deeply upsetting and troubling. And I'm saddened that we're dealing with divisiveness on this Board whose work is meant to be passionately focused on our constituents, not on infighting or power grabs. Let me be clear, it would be in the best interest of the town that we do not set a dangerous precedent tonight and seating a newly appointed Chair who has done nothing wrong, whose greatest crime is that in six short weeks, she hasn't been able to defy time and space to magically change the direction of the Board, which she wasn't even leading until recently. The Vice Chair, Susan's role before April, has a limited leadership role. And holding her accountable for what happened under the previous Chair's watch is absurd and frankly disingenuous. Susan is a dedicated, longtime town volunteer who served as Chair of the school committee capably prior to her time on the Select Board. She is thoughtful, deliberate in her thinking. Her leadership is not pushy or bombastic. Meaningful leadership often isn't. I have full confidence that Susan can lead us forward on many great initiatives this year for the benefit of the town. I also want to address the issue of open meeting law. When our Town Council advises on Monday that this motion violated the law, I was troubled that two members of the Board wanted to ignore Council's advice and ostensibly break the law. The hubris with which they addressed our Town Council sets a dangerous precedent, which, had we followed along, would have risked leaving our town open to potential complaints that would be costly to our citizens. Our role as Select Board members requires that we be deeply thoughtful in our choices and govern with humility. That was not the behavior I saw exhibited on Monday. And I understand why so many are troubled by it. On Monday, I offered to step down as Vice Chair and to have either Rich or Amy take on Vice Chair instead, with Susan remaining as Chair, providing her with a fighting chance to show that she can lead. It's only fair that we give any new Chair time to acclimate, especially given the demands of town meeting on our time during the spring months. However, upon reflection of Rich's insistence in ignoring Town Council, I think he may need more time to learn the policies and laws that govern this Board before he takes on that role. Several weeks ago, before I was named Vice Chair, Amy was offered the position and turned it down. I am heartened to see that despite her initial reluctance, she is now ready to take on a more active leadership role on the Board. I am willing to step down from Vice Chair and offer my support to her. It would be a great stepping stone for Amy and set her up to move to the Chair role next year if she so desires. The accepted process, for as many years I can remember, has been that the Chair first serve as Vice Chair, so as to acclimate to the role before fully leading this critical Town Board. I'm looking forward to seeing Amy share her ideas and experience with Susan and to see them work together to help our Board heal our divisions and move the town forward. I also think it would send a powerful message after what happened Monday, to have our Board led by two women for the first time in history. So I move that on, that we reorganize, keeping Susan as Chair and Amy Shapiro as Vice Chair.
Second, I also make another amendment. Thank you, Mariano. I'm sure this is blindsiding everyone. You know, I certainly take to heart what everyone is saying here, certainly what Ms. Delio has said as well. I think that if, and I really do appreciate Mariano's offer to step down. I think that that's a good way for us to move forward. But I do think that mediation is probably something that we need. And I know that's a complicated word. But I think that we need to kind of step back from everything ourselves as a group and put some effort into solving some of these problems. I think there are a lot of concerns that the Board has of the direction of the town. And I think, you know, Monday was not a good example of who we are and where we need to go. And I apologize personally for that and my part in that. And, you know, I think that we all need to be a part of the solution. And I think, you know, having Amy be Vice Chair, that's where we were headed anyway. And I realize that all of the problems aren't Susan's. Many of them are mine. And so I'm happy to work towards solving some of these problems. And we've got a lot of work to do. And, you know, I apologize to Rich and Amy for kind of blindsiding this. But I really, you know, I really feel like, you know, we need to step back from our entire agenda and gather in person and work out some of these issues. You know, I have been very concerned about the direction of the town. And, you know, I think we all are. And, you know, so that's what I would consider. And I know that's a very long amendment to the motion. But, you know, I guess the goal would be for us to really suspend our agenda and focus on when we can all get together in person and, you know, have somebody help us manage our conversation and our dialogue and come up with what I would say is an action plan for us over the next, you know, several weeks in order to get things back on track and continue the business of the town. Thank you.
Susan, can I read a statement that I wrote, please?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so I'm reading from the heart, so bear with me. So as I mentioned on Monday night, my experience on the Select Board over the last two years has been at times an unpleasant one. I felt often that there were factions at work working towards outcomes that I was not informed about or privy to. At times, I felt like I haven't belonged. And worst of all, I felt that I wasn't able to do what I promised when I was elected, to make Winchester an even better place to live for all. I say that because I want to be clear. We all, all five of us, have a role in where we are. My role is that I didn't speak up enough. I didn't ask enough questions. And I didn't follow my intuition when I felt things were amiss. So I'd ask all of you, my fellow Board members, to take a second at some point to reflect on your role so that we can come together and use our experience to be better. My true intention, free of any personal agenda, is to do what is right for the Town of Winchester and the staff that work on our behalf. That's why I ran for Select Board. And that is the reason, the only reason, I continue to serve. When I was approached about being Vice Chair in March, I declined. At the time, I felt disillusioned and frustrated and didn't have faith that I would have an impact in the role. Right or wrong, I made that decision with the information I had at that time. But I see now that the way we work as a Select Board, making critical decisions on behalf of our residents, must change. My eyes have been open to troublesome things in our town. And if there's a way that I can help to turn things around, then I feel a responsibility to do that. So whatever happens, I will work in the spirit of collaboration. We are a body of government, not five individuals with five different agendas. The only way that we can move forward is with a commitment for inclusive dialogue, spirited but respectful debate, and a level playing field for each of us. I've spoken to Susan at length over the past week about this and have shared my sincere feelings, as well as my respect and admiration for her, much as being insinuated about me and my motivations from people that know me and many that don't, which is painful. Still, through a lot of reflection, I do wonder what is needed to move us forward. I also want to share the contrary to what some may think. I do believe Rich has valid reasons behind his request for reorganization and that he feels that the problems he sees necessitate drastic action. He has a fresh perspective and has asked questions. And he's recognized that our Board can be and should be better. I truly don't believe in any way that he raises issue for any reason other than to make the Select Board more effective and transparent. But regardless of what happens, I'm committed to using the experience and tools that I have from my day job at a leadership development firm focused on inclusive leadership to help create a new tone and way of working that invites everyone's perspectives and leans into each of our strengths for the collective good. This is all new to me and candidly uncomfortable. I've never had political aspirations or motivations based on ego, power, or control. I just wanted to help. But I do feel that I have a voice now. And with that voice, I will do everything I can to make sure that everyone feels heard, hold each other accountable, and works together to get back on track and regain the trust of the people of Winchester.
So I believe there was a motion.
Susan, can I be heard?
Oh, of course.
Thank you. So, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. I appreciate the public comments. I've talked to many people today. I've received many phone calls. I've tried to talk to as many people as humanly possible in one day. And certainly, I appreciate, you know, everyone's views. And I think everyone is well-intentioned and has some great suggestions, including my fellow Board members. You know, my actions on Monday night were were essentially out of line. And, you know, I have grown frustrated with my onboarding with the Select Board. And that frustration in my conversations privately with Susan, you know, led me to believe that, you know, she, you know, didn't have it in her to right the ship here. Because all I've been hearing about since I've been elected is the dysfunction of this Board. And And, you know, I have to look no further than about an hour and a half ago when we were in a planning board meeting. And, you know, uh, the chair of the planning board, uh, you know, explained what happened last October and how dysfunctional our board is. Uh, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement. And at no time were my actions motivated by Susan's gender or, um, or race or anything like that. That's not who I am. To hear that insinuated by the public today was hurtful. And, you know, I understand their feelings and I can understand how optically that looked that way. And that's my fault for making it look that way. Uh, and I apologize for that. I apologize to anyone who had those thoughts, but that's not who I am. That's not who this board is. My actions were born out of conversations with Amy. We've talked extensively about the board's operation over the last couple of years. And, um, you know, frankly, staff members and other, um, other people that have been around this board. I've been on a listening tour, uh, trying to gain knowledge. And my actions weren't because I thought I was the smartest person in the room who could fix this, or certainly because I, I think I'm arrogant or anything like that. It was because I thought that given my unique, fresh perspective and the fact that I was new to this board and not living how this board has operated over the last couple of years, that I could be the best person to mediate these relationships and this situation. And certainly, um, you know, I'm, I'm humbled tonight to hear my, my fellow board members talk about mediation and talk about and recognize the dysfunction of the last couple of years on this board and how we need to improve. That's something new. That's not something that has been said in the conversations that I've had. So I'm certainly thankful that, that they recognize that. What I will say is we have a lot of work to do. I was elected on a Tuesday and on a Wednesday, I received significant information about the actions of this board. And it was very startling. Especially for someone who was so excited to join this board and get working for the public. What followed from there was a lack of transparency amongst my fellow board members for questions that I was asking and information I was seeking. Uh, and I think Susan, you and I have spoken at length about that. And, um, you know, I think your pledge today goes a long way to improving that. So I appreciate that. Uh, and in our conversations privately, uh, and your pledge is there. But we, we, we are under certain recommendations that we need to address. And, you know, I'd like to know a timetable for when we will start to address these recommendations, when we will start addressing and, and handling the review of the town manager, uh, the review of town council, and whoever else under our charter we need to review annually. My understanding is the town manager has never been reviewed since she's been hired, uh, which is very problematic for her. You know, because she, she needs guidance. She needs to know what her goals are. And we need to set goals as a board. So I hope what I'm hearing tonight is in fact true. Uh, and that we do take a step back, get our house in order, and hold our members accountable. And also do the hard work that we're employed to do, which is to make sure that the administration of the town runs smoothly. And, you know, I, I, I think Amy is an, is an excellent choice for vice chair. I think she would have been an excellent choice for chair as well. So, uh, you know, I fully support the motion. And I hope that we can move forward together. And I hope, um, you know, we do so in a timely manner. Because my fear is that, you know, I look at our agendas and I don't see stuff like what is our, in our normal course of action getting done, such as setting goals, setting committee assignments, setting, um, you know, review, setting up reviews. These are things that need to get done immediately so that we have a functioning board. And if my action on Monday, which I, you know, admit was some, you know, was out of line, spurs us, uh, inspired this conversation today to get us up and moving, then I think it was worth something. But, you know, certainly I apologize to my fellow board members. I apologize to the public, you know, for, for my actions. And I look forward to, to getting this board, you know, turned around and, and doing, you know, the public's work.
Thank you, Rich. So I believe Mariano made a motion.
Hey, can I just comment?
Yeah.
That there was an inaccuracy there. The, the town manager has received reviews since she's been here? So I did a full review two years ago when I was chair. And she received a partial review last year where many members of this board filled out the, our, our sections of her review. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that.
We did start that, yes.
So if I, if I could just jump in, Susan, and I know, um, you know, the, um, you know, there, there's a motion there, which, you know, I, I second from Mariano. I appreciate that. I think a active mediation, you know, effort on our part is, I think, you know, probably needed if it's the pleasure of the board. And really making that our, our next meeting to, um, to resolve some of these operational issues. And, uh, and then from there, um, you know, as I said, kind of come up with a, uh, with an action plan for the board. Um, and, and overall, just a better way to communicate. I mean, obviously this past year has been really difficult. It's been a lot of strain on the board to not physically be together. You know, it's, we're otherwise, uh, a, a close group of people. So it's, you know, uh, terrible to be in this position. And I think we're all ideologically aligned as well. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's frustrating. And, uh, I appreciate every, appreciate everyone's words and candor tonight and, you know, but I think we still, we need to, to really focus on this moving forward and, uh, having kind of a structured, uh, you know, conversation as, as Heidi had suggested. And, um,
Yep.
Uh, and, and then, you know, a commitment to an action, action plan in, you know, 30 days or whatever it is. I don't know what that looks like, you know, but.
I, I recognize we need a timetable. But I can't come up with it right now, obviously.
Agree to agree.
Agree to agree.
Uh, yeah, I agree. I think, you know, Susan, you and Amy can, uh, after this meeting, um, hopefully, assuming that we all vote to, to appoint Amy as vice chair, which I fully support. I, I think you two can work together to put a timetable and we can come back to it in a future meeting.
Good. Um, thank you all. So we need to do a roll call vote. I'm calling, calling Amy first.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you all for your candor and your, your, your deep thinking and your willingness to, to embark on this new, new face. Thank you.
Thank you. And Amy, congratulations. And I am hard to see two women leading this board.